Greg Aspoff.
Okay. All right. We got it?
No, I got six fifteen now, okay.
Okay, so all rise for the pledge.
Mr. Nayholm, can you lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for men and women in the armed forces, first responders, any fortunate incident that happened at the parade. Thank you.
All right, Christopher Cosgrove, you're on the list.
Stand up, stand up.
It's okay if I could sit here. We don't need a help I fall and I can't get up moment. I just wanted to speak tonight, as we all know, tonight's the last meeting of a council term, and we've got three members that won't be moving forward to the next council.
I'm sorry, Chris, can you give me your address, please?
I'm sorry, Chris Cosgrove, 143 Sunny Valley Grove, I should know that. One, we've got Doug Skelly, who's sat to my left for two years. And I know as a two-term councilman, youth sports booster, and fitting all of this in, being a successful business owner in town, I know I've always appreciated your perspective that you brought to the council. Dave Lawson sat to my right for pretty much of two years, and, you know, Dave, you spent a lot of years on the Board of Education before coming here and serving here, and you brought that perspective, and you and I have worked together on a couple of subcommittees, and I think we've worked very well together. And, you know, I've always appreciated, you know, your input and getting things done on some of these subcommittees that we're doing. And, but I want to spend most of my time with, on discussing Walter Bear, Papa Bear, Santo, whatever he's known as around town. You spent decades serving a community as a schoolteacher, and then here as a councilman. And, you know, I started coming here years ago to learn about how our municipal government works, and I sat out there in that audience. And I saw somebody who was engaged in the process, and, you know, was willing to voice his opinion regarding of the, regardless of the politics involved, and I thought, you know, that's a guy that I can vote for, even though he's a Democrat. But you've really, you've taught me a lot on how to be a good councilman, and we don't always agree, but we've never been disagreeable, and it's been my real honor to serve with you these last two years. And I know that your community service isn't going to end here, you're going to go on, you're going to do other things to give back to this community, and I look forward to seeing that, but God bless you and all the best.
I am humbled, Chris, thank you, thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, thank you.
Steve.
P. M. Steve Lundy, 55 Ford Ice Road, New Milford. Again, I'm basically here because of the fact that we do have a turnover of volunteers tonight, we'll be losing three great members of our board, and I would like to thank each and every one of you for volunteering your time and trying to make this town a better town, which I believe you all have, I think. Again, I got to say for Walter, I mean, I first started coming to town council meetings years ago, and Walter's a staple here, and, you know, not only his levity and his good looks, but, you know, he, he always, he always put the town first. And like Chris Cosgrove just said, it was never politics with Walter, it was always the town, and it was the townspeople. And I, for one, on behalf of my family, would like to thank you. I wish the other members the very best in everything that you guys do, and I wish the incoming members who aren't here tonight, but I'm sure will be here at the next meeting, I hope that they will work to unify the town after the election that we just had. So I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Jeff.
Oh, boy.
You thought you was going to get away with it, didn't you?
No, 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 I'm an equal opportunity clock watcher, five minutes. Five minutes.
Very, very short. I'm here tonight to say farewell to a gentleman who has devoted his life to a community, state, and nation.
Jeff, I'm sorry, can I get your address, please?
I'm sorry, Jeff McBridey, 288 Kent Road, New Milford, Connecticut, 06776. Okay. He served honorably in the U.S. Army and attained the rank of SP4E4, and after the Army, he went on to college to become a teacher, and he taught in the Brookfield School Systems for 35 years before his retirement. He's been a member in good standing of the American Legion for 30 continuous years, and preserved, defended, and protected the American Legion's ideals always. I say tonight, thank you, Mr. Walter Bear, for your tireless dedication to the community, state, and nation, and with that being said, it gives me a great pleasure and an honor to present you with an American Legion certificate for 30 dedicated years. God bless you always, sir.
Give me a fair hug.
That's the, that's the end of the list, sir.
Thank you, welcome. Katie?
Yes, moving on to item three, first, I'd like to suspend the rules to add item 3D to the consent agenda regarding donations made to social services.
Any discussion on the addition? All is in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, move to accept the consent agenda items 3, A, B, C, and D, including, which is the prior minutes, the tax collector balance. Youth Agency would like to let everyone know that they have received a donation of $500 from the Western Connecticut Coalition for our youth gambling awareness project here in New Milford. The funds will be used to help produce media projects regarding youth gambling awareness. It's requested, if this is approved, that these funds be placed in revenue account 1044-1900-43305, and to increase the expense account, 1044-1900-58905 by $500. Item 3D, the social services would like to acknowledge, if we accept it, the 2021 Archbishop's Annual Appeal donation of the Archdiocese of Hartford. The donation is in the amount of $3,250 for the Farmers Market Collaborative, and $3,250, $3,250 for the Hope Fund, and that's the end of that. Motion?
Any discussion on the motion?
I guess they're typos, page three of the minutes.
Do you need a second of motion before you?
Second. Page three. Mike, where it says Mike Byrd, a member of the committee, I assume you either ran out of ink, or that should read 20.46% of buildable acres.
Said the total.
Yeah, 20.46%.
And the state maximum is 21, 21%?
Yes. Okay.
Line doesn't show up.
Yeah, line doesn't show up.
Yeah, okay, so 4.67%. Okay.
And if you go down to where it says Mike Bass, Miss Bailey, and Mr. Gass, apostrophe S, typo.
Oh, yes.
Are you leaving the council any time soon?
Well, I, I read them.
Take your time, Walter. Take your time.
I just paid for. Where it says the vaccination rate, I assumed that's 74.6%. Or you ran out of ink.
So is that my printer?
Oh, ah, okay.
Seventy, yes, that's right.
And it should be 69.67%. I'm done.
Thank you, Walter.
So we have a motion and a second with the amendments to the minutes per Councilman Bear. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number four, an update from Dr. Jeremy Levin. Jeremy's here?
Good evening. Great to see you, and what an honor to have had the privilege of two years in watching you work, thank you.
Sure.
And the others. I, I have a report which, may I thank you, I've submitted.
Yes.
I hope the others have seen it, I'd like to bring attention to three items. I've just returned from abroad inspecting COVID in six different countries in Europe and in Israel. Something, first of all, I'll start with the U.S. and just go abroad, because I think it's important that you, the council gets a feeling for what affects us here, because there are some things that are going to come and have an effect here. The first is that despite the exceptionally corrected numbers that are vaccinated, and the town is doing exceptionally, the country is not. We have 770 dead, 770,000 deaths, and it's tracking to a million. Before we get this time next year, it's likely to be a million, and it's overwhelmingly people who are not vaccinated. If you look at the vaccines on the boost, we know now that the vaccines effectiveness tail off after about six months. It's absolutely essential that those who are going to get vaccinated get another booster, and the period of time is roughly six months, doesn't matter which booster you're taking. It also looks like the total number of boosters, while we, the nation itself is doing pretty good, on average, we're about 59, close to 60% of having had it, but it's tiny in some sections, particularly, for example, in the upper Midwest, Michigan and Minnesota, which are really having a rough time, and the number of boosters is only about 17% in the nation. So for the council, as you start thinking about the town, I think one of the most important things is to consider that this vaccine, the vaccines do tail off, boosters are essential, and we've got to keep our guard up if we're going to have a normal life. Now, normal life does exist, that's what I came to say to you, I did see it, spent 10 days inspecting a lot of different things in Israel, I went there to look at the data that they were getting from Pfizer, and I admit, I did see the beach, but I did also have a chance to see a normal society, a society that's very vibrant, but everybody's getting vaccinated, and when you're in a crowd, everybody's wearing a mask, and it's doing super well. That's at counterpoint to places like Belgium and Holland, where it's just a mess, you are having huge social unrest, government hasn't figured out how to communicate with the people, particularly in Holland, a lot of opposition to simply taking vaccines, and you're having unrest. So the lesson for us is what you've been doing in this town so well, working together as a council, the more we work together, the better it is. Second point is actually the deaths. It's came to my attention while I was abroad, that a number of reports that we're getting in the United States are definitely wrong. We know the global figures are reported to us being 5.2 million are dead now, that is manifestly incorrect, we're viewing it through the eyes of America, where we have good concurrence between the diagnosis and time of death and actual numbers of deaths. It's not great, but it's pretty good, and the way that people measure is asking the question, how many more deaths do you have than you would normally expect in a year? And here, we know exactly, pretty exact, in other words, when somebody dies and there's a diagnosis, they know it's actually what it's caused by. So here we know 770,000, which is a lot, have died, and that's more than we should have had of that same period of time. In Russia, they're reporting only a tiny number above that, what they normally have, but actually, the number of deaths that are occurring are vastly more. So, in other words, the difference between the diagnosis of COVID at death and the actual numbers of deaths is very wrong, and so as we look around the world today, that, the estimates are now ranging not 5.2 million, but somewhere between 17 to 20 million people have died. It's a huge difference, the best report is actually in, in The Economist, and I recommend, if you're able to get a look at it, they actually are confirmed now by quite a number of different governments outside, we're not paying a lot of attention here, but governments are. Third item, which is important, and that's something which I know the council is well aware of, and we're ahead of the game here, I think, we talked about the variants, well, the variants are definitely coming, and we said, well, so what, you know, that the vaccines will take care of them, that's not actually the case, and it's demonstrated by the three major pharmaceutical companies who are producing vaccines are taking steps to prepare for and to practice for the breakout from Delta. Now, the claim was, first hint of this came in June of last year, this year, sorry, where Albert Bura, the CEO of Pfizer, said that he was planning so that any time a new variant came out 100 days later, there'd be a new vaccine. We now know that factually, all three of the major vaccine producers are running clinical trials, where they're trying to get ready for the next set of variants, they expect that, they wouldn't be spending the money, they're not saying this publicly, they would not be running these trials unless they expect it, and the dangers we've talked about, about those variants, is that Delta has been a real bear to tackle, forgive me. I didn't.
Okay.
The, it's been a bear to tackle, but we've managed it. The ones that break out from these vaccines will be tough, and so they want to be sure that they're ahead of the game. I think the message for the town is, don't let our guard down, and be prepared, and be have the first responders and the responding teams ready to respond if and when it comes. So if there's equipment that needs to be stored, it should be stored, if the people need to be trained and ready to go, they should be, because the likelihood is, we're not going to accept what we did last year, the terrible constraints we had, and we're much better prepared, but we need to know that it's coming, and that's what I think we should be thinking about, and I'd urge the council to think carefully about that as you consider the plans for the next year, not suggesting expenditures, I'm just, it's forward thinking, that's all. Lastly, with regard to that, last week, or two weeks ago, I gave a report on the two medicines that came from Merck and Pfizer, it's increasingly obvious that the Pfizer medicine is better, it's still a handful of pills, it's four on one end of the day and four on the other end of the day, but if you go to a hospital and you do have COVID, it will have an effect on it, there's no question about that, and I'm hoping that over the next six months, they'll bring it down to a couple of pills a day, and that you can stay at home if you are ill, and so that should be a big change, but it still won't stop the variants, it will simply mitigate the effects of the virus. So optimistic that we can, that we're going to get ready, at least the companies are getting ready, that our town is ready, but I do urge you to think very carefully of that, and then lastly, please take, take note, this is, I was a bit shocked at the difference between 5 million and 17 million, and then the idea that we're going to go to a million deceased in this country over the next year is just a bit of a, bit of a blow. So I don't want to be a downer, I think this is a much better situation than we were last year, I think we're infinitely more mentally and physically prepared for this, but I do think we should not let our guards down. So with that, I end my report, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Back to the, on the Pfizer, and I guess the other ones that are looking at alternative vaccines for these new mutations that have, that don't exist yet, right? How can they do trials on these if they don't exist yet?
So the great news is, that we discovered last year, was incredible paralyzism on all of the trials that occurred, part of the compression in time was the pure bureaucracy, pure bureaucracy and getting that out of the way. Second piece of the equation was, so that, that added the speeding, speed, significant amount, just getting rid of bureaucracy. Next was actually having the constructs ready, the constructs are pieces of DNA and the systems in which to build them, or pieces of RNA, actually, ready, but not exactly the RNA, the kinds of RNA that might be there, how do you adapt it, understanding how you quickly change that RNA. It's actually a chemical modification, but you have to know how to do it, and they weren't prepared for it last year, they are prepared for it now. So the third item is knowing what clinical, where to set up a clinical trial site, I know it sounds like, but if, it sounds a bit strange, but if you're going to fight a fire, we have a bunch of colleagues here who do this, they would like to have their, their tools positioned in the right space, it's exactly the same place, you need to have a hospital, you need to have all the protocols ready to go, and so that all you do is you go into the lab, you change your chemical composition, you try it out on a cell, make sure that it's safe, try it out on the right animals, and then it's all ready to go. So Chris, I think the real question is, they need to have this all greased and ready to run, it's not as if it's, the chemical modification at the end is actually one of the easiest thing, it's all the other pieces, the logistics of it, and finally manufacturing. They've got to be able to turn the switch on the manufacturing, they've got the distribution a lot better, but that's that manufacturing piece. So it's interesting, it's not the science, the science has proved itself, you can do that in the lab pretty, pretty fast, it's all of the steps between there to getting it to the mouth.
Thank you.
Yeah, I asked several, several months ago about masks in schools, do you still stand by that?
Yeah.
And you can say, yeah.
I did, I did, I did, I'm, you know, until the kids are all vaccinated, they do it consistently in Israel, they, until, and that's, I went to see that, because of one of your things, how does it affect, the kids laugh it off, what I find is, the little guys are wearing it and just laughing it off. What's, the problem, though, David, with the very little ones, is language, and that is the, one of the things I found there, which was interesting, several of the teachers said to me, that the little guys, when they can't see you speaking, they have difficulty in getting languages fast, and I think that's a big problem, so the faster they get the vaccines to the little guys, and we know that two to five will, probably the first approval will be the beginning of next year, the, I'm, I am worried about that, David, very much so, actually, I think it's a, it's an uncomfortable situation, and one which maybe the kids will recoup.
Is there, because I can't find, is there some, some data that, and you tell me where it is, that shows masks are actually working, because there's so much out there, it, I mean, even this, this fall, kids are wearing masks through school yet, they're getting sick, not COVID, but some other sicknesses, so I, I just, I feel, as you said, the negatives from the mask, I don't know if they're outweighing the positives, because there really hasn't been any great studies that have shown that masks work, because you look at, you look at, in Florida, which they don't require masks in schools, when schools started, their rates went down an extremely large amount, and they're now one of the lowest rate right now in the country, and they have not worn masks in schools, so, I mean, I, I don't have the studies, because I just don't see them, I just don't see that masks are worth the negative side effects, and there's a lot of negative side effects, not just, not just that, but, you know, the fact that you're not breathing normally, and not getting exposed to some of the normal germs that you should get exposed to, and a lot of other things, plus the teaching, it's not just the little kids, I've talked to some teachers, and when you're wearing a mask, you can't tell if kid's getting something or not, because you're not seeing their face, I, I just, I'd like to see the studies saying, you know, showing that, here's, here's one group that didn't, here's one group that did, and here's a difference, because I have yet to find those studies.
Mike, I can't disagree with you, there are studies, but they're, they're very limited.
Yeah.
The bottom line is that I just, real world experience has shown it, that's all, so real world experience, and the best, the best test case is in Israel, nobody else, because they're very controlled there, and they did it because they're of running the experiment across the whole nation with Pfizer. So, look, they're very worried about the little guy's language, they did, nobody mentioned to me about that, the comment that you've made, which was, the kid's not learning, but that's, I'm sure that is an issue, but I don't have, I can't give you chapter and verse.
There's ways to check knowledge, other than just looking.
No, but it's for a teacher to understand the kids get. Oh, this is from a teacher, yeah.
I can't tell by looking at somebody whether they get it or not.
I also look at the health issues of being in a mask 24/7, but.
Mary Jane?
The numbers are shocking, 17 to 20 million worldwide, but I think if you've been following India, and how horrible and how under-reported the COVID cases were, I mean, they were just, you know, people were dying left and right, and they're just dumping them in graves and no real, you know, they died, cause of death, it's not, definitely not COVID, but it was. So it's, it's in the third world countries, it's really bad, and Russia, we can never depend on to tell us the truth, so, you know, it's a problem, but, you know, at one, at what point do we, like, as a council, start wearing a mask again, like, at what? Like, at what level would you?
I, I think the council is doing absolutely on target. I mean, you, you are doing, first of all, look at the town. Town is, compare us to six months ago. Town is a very different town to what it was then in large measure because of the efforts that you've taken. I think getting the vaccines up to the level that we have and then ensuring that we get the, the boosters is the best possible protection and avoidance from having to take masks in groups. So for me, I'm, I brought my mask, I was wearing it as I walked in here, but I took it off. I feel comfortable because I've had my booster, but I won't feel comfortable in six months' time, I can tell you.
Right. So that's what I'm talking about, like, at what point, hopefully you'll come back and tell us.
No, I, I'm, Mary Jane, I'm not sure I'll have the information. You know, I think this is such a difficult one.
It is.
I think it's just, let's go after the booster.
Well, suffice it to say, it doesn't hurt.
It does, I think, David, that's the answer, it doesn't hurt.
I mean, would you want a doctor, you know, operating on you without a mask? I suspect no.
Yeah, that's not viral, that's bacteria that try and eat out of the wound.
It's, it's both, actually, but David, you're right. Yeah, it doesn't do any harm.
Katie?
Jeremy, so you mentioned the, the breakouts from Delta, that they're inevitable, and you just made a comment, you think it's about six months that we may see that here in our country?
No, I, I said boosters should be six months, sorry.
Okay.
I have no prediction on when the breakout is, but I can tell you that right now, there are about a half a dozen what are called variants of concern that are being tracked. They're not breaking out for an odd reason, there's too much Delta around.
Oh, still.
So for the moment, Delta is keeping, oddly enough, is keeping out the variants. I mean, it's, it's a very strange situation, but when you get a drop in booster resistance to Delta and they get a grip on a community, then it's going to be, then we'll see one of them break out.
Right. So then in effect, when, and we won't say if, when a, a new variant comes along, it'll be similar to what we did, six months time to get another booster?
I think that's the case.
I mean, to be honest about it, and safe.
I think that's, from everything that I've read, it looks like six months appears to be the, the period of time. It's not, somebody said, well, why not a year? Well, honestly, nobody knew. I mean, it's as simple as that. Why do you take a tetanus vaccine that lasts for 10 years?
Could have done it worked.
Yeah.
Right, we don't know yet, yes.
We don't know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just one quick comment, aren't we more susceptible at this time of the year to all sorts of viruses and, and colds, partially because, or mostly because of the drying of our sinuses and mucous membranes? Isn't this our first line of defense, right? Is that mucous membrane, maybe you could just give a little, if you could, just a little background on why that's important from.
So there, there are two, the body's pretty smart, and it, if you think about it, the largest organ that you have in your body is actually your skin. And it's protective against all sorts of things, whether it be chemical, whether it be a biological or whatever. And on your mucous membranes, you've got an added, an added set of things. You actually have a slime that comes out there that secretes out antibodies and secretes out cells, and they combat all the time, all of these bugs. And it's a fight all the time. But when you go into an environment which is dry and you lose that, your membranes crack, and that means you've no longer got the, the protection that you would have from the first line of defense in your skin. And you're quite right, that's the problem at that moment. And then the other complication is, of course, when you're in a room where there are multiple people, in winter, like we all do, you have not just that, the dryness, but in addition to which you have large numbers of people congregating. So anything that, any virus can take advantage of that in a heartbeat. So those are, I mean, I think, Tom, those are right on target, they're, it's a, it's a difficult one. We haven't yet seen the flu come back in the way that we expected it to. That's probably because people are being more careful, which is good. Normally about 40,000 to 60,000 people die a year from the flu. We haven't yet seen anything like that, but it is, you know, people will watch that carefully.
Thank you, Doctor. Don?
Dr. Levin, thank you for coming tonight. I have, I guess like a comparison. So over the weekend, I attended a Yale Harvard game. And so, as you can imagine, many students come there, and there must have been, I guess, 10,000 students all in this one area, partying. And so the argument that I would have, when, if you have to wear a mask in a classroom of 20 people, and you have 10,000 kids sharing liquids, partying up, what would be the argument you would give me that they, they wouldn't transpire outdoors with them partying as opposed to 20 people in a room with a mask?
The only difference is the ventilation. That's the only difference. I would, you know, quite frankly, even in a large mass like that, I would not feel comfortable.
Right.
But it's made infinitely worse when they're in a room and there's no circulation. So I can give you again, the instance in Israel, classes are all, all having enhanced ventilation.
So when people are in a stadium together, standing side by side, it's, would be less susceptible to get that.
If there's wind and if there's, if there's some form of free flow, it is less, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely less.
Okay.
Who won?
Harvard. Yes, they did.
Yep, 22 seconds left.
Yes.
Any other questions for Dr. Levin? Thank you, Dr. Levin.
Thank you. Item number five, update from Health Director Lisa Morrison.
Lisa's not here.
Okay, you want to give it?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll do that under Mayor's comments.
All righty.
So it's, I'll piggyback beyond Dr. Levin. Speaking of Lisa today, are COVID numbers in totality? As we say each and every time at the council, this is in no means by how many people currently are confirmed COVID cases, but this is in totality since a year ago, March. State of Connecticut is 376,732. Litchfield County is 15,829, which is up 118 from Friday. Hospitalizations for the entire county are at 11. And Milford is at 2,856, which is up 12 from Friday. We continue to offer vaccine clinic at Pettibone. Dates for the clinic for November, the 30th, from 12:30 to 4:30 at Pettibone, and that's for the 5 to 11 only. And then also from 4 to 7:30 PM at Pettibone. Griffin Hospital is also helping with that clinic as well. Vaccine stats currently from, from November 18th, and this is a seven to 10 day look back. First doses would be, let me grab it here, let's see, first doses are at 20,437, which is 76.24% of the population that could get vaccinated have. Fully vaccinated is 18,774, which is 70.4%. So we continue to offer the vaccines for those that choose to do so. And we have all three vaccines, which is the Johnson &amp; Johnson, the Pfizer, and the Moderna. We also offer the booster shots and third doses. And also our, our commercial sites, whether they be Big Y, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, also offer those opportunities as well. Also want to thank everyone that came out and voted in our municipal election. Excuse me. This election was the highest voter turnout in municipal election history. Thank you to all those that ran to put their names forward, and thank you to everybody that came out and voted. Thank you to our new elected boards and commission members, and thank you to all that have served. With that being said, I'd like to stop for a moment. And for our council members that will not be joining us this next one, I'd like to personally thank them. I'm going to start with Councilman Lawson. Councilman?
Dave, I want to thank you for your time on the council. Also, many, many years board of ed, we worked together on that as well. And you know, you, along with Tom, started really talking about bringing in the pre-K into the schools, and I thank you for all your efforts here on the council as well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, David.
And Dave, I think, I would like to give a big smile. Okay, give me a big smile. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stay here for a minute.
Next councilman scheduled. Well, I want to thank you for your two tours here on the council, and also for all your stuff you do for the kids, your coaching, all the turf committees working on together to bring us turf fields. I know there's more that we're going to do again, I hope.
Good luck.
Walter, thank you for your many years of service, knowing that the council, to help in so many ways our community, can't, personally, I can't thank you enough. You're not going to let, at all, you've got a lot of stuff we're still with you. And definitely want to thank you for all your contributions here on the council, for all of our councilmen. Thank you.
Yes, we have some refreshments after. Also, to let people know, we're having our swearing in ceremony on December 1st. We'll be right here at Deep Harbor Room at 5:30, so all are invited to attend. Roads work is just about completed for this year. With the completion, that brings us to about 62 miles of road that's been done so far in our road program. Want to thank our DPW team, Jack Healy and team, and also our contractors for a job well done. Also, just a quick update on the Still River, the Husatonic Railroad. Tomorrow, we'll do, be doing repairs on the Still River Railroad crossing. It'll be starting at 8:00 AM, finishing up at 3:00 PM. We know that's a major connector road, especially during commute time, so if you have the opportunity, this will cause some delays, so please consider an alternate route and plan accordingly. So put a little extra time, you might want to leave a little bit early. Our roof programs, our New Milford High School roof, that project has started. The contractors continues taking off the existing shingles. They continue with the installation of the water and ice barrier, and the installation of the standing seam on the northern side of the roof has begun, so if you get a chance to see that coming there, we're excited for that project as it continues on. The New Milford Town Hall Roof, they began some of the prep work here, which is, if you look on the back, they've taken some of the parking already and they're getting ready for that work. The standing seam finally came in, so we're excited about that project to get underway. Library construction, the contractor continues with the roof trim, wiring control equipment. They've hooked up the new pump and expansion tanks to the boiler. They did some outside work on the west side, setting the light posts, space forms, underground rain leader drains. They've also did the paving in the back parking, so we're very excited about this project as it continues to move forward. It'll be a state of the art library that we're all excited to see, once it's ready to get open. Also want to thank the DPW team, as we all know, we're going into the winter months now. Again, we're going to have our resident sand pile for our residents to come, take a couple five gallon buckets if they like. That sits free to everyone. The sand pile is at Youngsfield Road, and I can't thank the DPW team for setting that up for our residents. Want to thank the girls' high school cross-country team, Coach Vaughn and the team, they had such a great season this year. So this year, they won the SWCs for the second year in a row. They won their first Class L championship since 1997. They're the state open champions, which is the first in school history. First place in the New England championships, which is the first in the school's history. Amazing season. So congratulations. And they're actually going to be coming into our next town council meeting in December. So that's great. Congratulations to the Milford Soccer, U11A Sounders, as they are the CJSA Northwest Champions. Congratulations to the Milford Soccer Club, 11U11B, as they also are the Northwest Champions. Congratulations to the Milford Soccer Club, U14 and 15 Boys Team, they won the B Division. We have the girls', U15 Impact United Team, they won the Northwest Division A Championship. And congratulations to the Connecticut Impact United 1415 Boys Team, they won the Division A Championship and were the runner-up for the Connecticut Cup 1415 Boys Championship.
Is that soccer?
Soccer, yes.
They're big in soccer.
Doing a great job, the youth sports is doing phenomenal. Congratulations to the 14U Northwest Hockey Team, as they won the Holy Name Icebreakers Tournament in Massachusetts. So congratulations to Coach DeMonico, Coach Konduski, and Coach Hespin. The players were Mason Konutsky, Lucas DeMonico, Kiran Heslin, Dillenstein, Cullen Sturdivet, Miles Wilson, Will Nebe, Bryce Schotter, Mike Holton, Cedar Velez, Carson Gomansky, Broder Dieter, Jack Leary, outstanding job. The Northwest 10U Hockey Team also won Holy Name Icebreakers Tournament. And also the Bantam A, Bantam A1, Squirt A and Squirt B teams as well. Outstanding tournament.
What's going on?
That's what I'm talking about.
They're having their Cheerios or whatever.
Absolutely.
Something in the water, did you say?
So that's great. And as you can see outside, our Park and Rec team has been busily putting out our, starting out with our decorations, as you can see. And this Saturday, we're having the, the tree lighting on the green, 5:30 for all those that want to, that want to come out and participate. Thank you to United Methodist Men's Group that does that each and every year, amazing. Thank you so much for that. And, yeah, Saturday, yep, shop local also. And Park and Rec, we're having this year, the Town of New Milford Holiday Lighting Decorating Contest. So if you like decorating the outside of your property, we'd love for you to do so. Contest rules, the decorations must be visible from the roadway. The last day to register would be Thursday, December 16th. Decorations for the contest must be visible and lit up on December 18th and 19th, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM for judging. Contest winners will be announced and notified by email, as well as the Park and Rec website on December 22nd. These will be the prize categories. The Clark W. Griswold, because it could be seen from outer space. The Traditional, which is the classic holiday look. And then the Misfit Toy, best use of inflatables. So online registration will be accepted on Friday, November 19th, as we said, through Thursday, the 16th. So thank you to Laura Murphy and the Park and Rec team. Also, we're doing window decoration for our businesses. So we'll be having the holiday window decorating contest. Please consider this year, if you have a business, for more information, you can contact Pat Hembrook in the mayor's office at phembrook@newmilford.org. So we'd like for you to register by December 1st and your windows decorated by the 10th of December.
And Mayor, there are two categories in that contest.
Absolutely.
Downtown and.
All the other places.
Yeah, and everywhere else.
Absolutely.
But I had a question, Mayor.
Yes.
And I didn't get an answer to this, and I did send it to Ms. Hembrook. What if your downtown window isn't facing the outer street? What if it's facing opposite? It's not facing the street, downtown. But I'm downtown and I have a window, I have three.
We're going to judge it anyway. We don't care where the windows.
You heard it here, everybody.
We'll find it. We'll find it.
Okay.
And I'd like to wish everybody. And I'd like to wish everybody a very blessed and happy Thanksgiving. Whether you're here or whether you're traveling, please stay safe. And as Dr. Levin said before, it's very important, especially during this time. We all know that the same as last year, you're gonna have an uptick in COVID, so please keep your hand protocols, your hand hygiene. If you're in a very highly dense area and you haven't been vaccinated, you're supposed to wear a mask. You should wear a mask. If you've been vaccinated and you feel that you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. Do whatever you can, but please stay safe. And again, lastly, there is the opportunity for you or your loved one to get vaccinated. It's very important. And that's as Dr. Levin would be glad to tell you, that's the number one way to slow down the spread of the disease. And that's what I have so far, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to item seven, which would be discussion and possible action on the creation of a Sports Complex Feasibility Temporary Subcommittee.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. So this is what we talked about a while ago in the spring. Is, this has been something that's been on the radar for many, many years. For those that don't know, a lot, if not most, of our sports fields are on private property. They're not on town property. And when Mayor Murphy was mayor, Garrick Fields, which are Nestle's, some people call them Nestle's Fields, some of the fields were going to be taken away because the company was grown. So Mayor Murphy, at that time, charged a group to go and take a look and see if there was availability to create a sports complex for the town, where it would be on town property, where we'd never have to worry about fields being taken away. Also, these fields would be a joint place where parents wouldn't have to go from one end of New Milford to the other end of New Milford, because one child is playing in one division and then the other division. And it's also safer places. We all know when you go down past Nestle Field, the parking is on one side of the road and they have to cross the road. There's also danger to that as well. So I know the council had given permission to talk to Kimberly Clark, which we are doing, but this would be an opportunity to create a subcommittee where we can talk about the feasibility of creating a sports complex, what that would look like, and bring that back to the council and then to the public. Similar to what we did with the turf fields at the high school.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the mayor creating a Sports Complex Feasibility Temporary Subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, second, Ellen? Doug.
Doug?
How many people would you have on this committee?
I'm thinking of about eight or nine people.
That's a lot, but okay.
It's a big company.
Get a lot of input. Doug?
No, I agree, when we were on the turf committee, I think we had 11, 12. But what we did is we had people from the community that were expertise in lighting and construction. We had people from the BOE on it, so everybody could network together and then go back to, you know, their own commissions and inform them. This way, they wouldn't be in the dark. And so I agree one hardly with the mayor. This is much needed, just like the turf fields, where we could see how much the kids, the youth, use outside of the high school as well. And we can see just in the last few years, how the youth programs are starting to accelerate. And, you know, I've been a part of the Bulls and softball and stuff, and we're at the mercy of the private owners. And so it would be nice to have a one-stop shop. And so obviously, you know, the mayor and I have talked in, you know, with the boss's permission, I'm probably gonna be on it as well to help out, so. But I'm looking forward to helping out and seeing, even though my kids are grown, I like to see the town grow. And that only helps the economic part, even though people say sports. It brings in, you know, it brings in businesses. You know, when you have facilities in here and it brings in other towns to play in sports and stuff, that helps the economic value as well, so I'm looking forward to it.
Any other discussion?
Sal?
I think it's an awesome idea. Do we have an entitlement at this point? Or we're just in a...
I think we'd be creating the committee, getting the approval at the next meeting of the committee makeup. And then they would come back and report to us.
Similar to what they did with the turf fields, like every couple of months, giving us an update
and looking to, you know, really expedite to get it going.
So that would be basically one big field with all different sports, solo teams type of thing.
So kind of at first blush, what you look at is maybe a couple of multipurpose fields. What I mean by multipurpose would be soccer fields, like all-purpose soccer, football, lacrosse would all be like, you could use that field like you do the high school.
Yeah.
And then you'd have some softball, baseball fields that would go around. And you'd have a BMX track. You'd have areas where seniors could walk. And maybe do some exercises. Then inside, you'd have basketball and volleyball courts.
Yeah, I'm in full support, because my son was taking a tennis class lately and the teacher was awesome, and I asked, can we continue this over the winter? And it sounds like with the facility, like this, we can play tennis all year long.
Katie?
I'm, no children, obviously, but I'm 100% in favor of this. I've been into several towns, there happens to be one in New Jersey that I've been to, and that's exactly what they did. They took a space and they have every age level and every type of sport in one place with a playground type thing for the younger kids. And it allows the parents to go, and they have a picnic area as well, and I think they have a snack bar facility. But then you're not driving all over the place, and we won't have to worry because it'll be town property and it'll be ours and the kids will be there. But it's, it is a lot safer, I have to say. I drive on, who's, you know, down past the Nestle Fields and, you know, you really have to creep along because the kids are just, you know, they're kids. And they're everywhere, and so are some of the parents that come out. And I, you know, I think that having a spot like that is something that New Milford has asked about, thought about, talked about for a long time. And Sal, to say when it would happen, it's gonna take a lot of people looking at all the positives and negatives here and what the community has to say. But if we're gonna have good education and keep our farmland and keep our downtown going and doing all the things that we've been doing and want to do more of, I think it just is imperative that we have a proper place for children. You just read off all those teams, it's unbelievable how well they're doing. You didn't mention the football team, but that's okay.
I was gonna mention it a little bit later.
Okay, good. Okay.
Beat Brookfield.
Okay. But I think it's important that we continue, because that's part of the spirit of a community, and ours is no different than any other. So I'm 100% in for this. That's all I got to say.
My only, my only fear, and as you talk about indoor facilities, is competing with private companies like CSA. If you start competing with them, it becomes really hard for them, because rentals is a big portion of their business. So you start doing indoors facilities and that gets a little scary to me to take business away from a private company because of the tax thing. It's just something that you have to be weary of. I mean, outdoors is, you know, it's a different, there's no one in town that's doing something like that.
Mike, do our, our school teams play indoors there now?
They have, our school teams do, no, but they have private organizations that rent that space and...
Right, right. Oh, so you mean if we had a town space, that would be open for rental as well?
I assume so.
You're saying it would be in competition?
Well, I think... I'm just saying to be careful, that's all I'm...
This is what the committee's going to be investigating.
I know, I didn't say don't do it. I just said, just put that in the back of your mind, and the last thing you want to do is put this...
And Mike, I 100% agree with you, we do not wanna, we do not want to hurt a private business that's, that's in business to help our kids, you know, with mentoring programs that they have. You're talking about CSA.
Yeah.
Right? They have private coaching and that stuff. So I think this is something the feasibility committee would look at, because we definitely don't want to hurt that. We want to enhance it and make it better.
Yeah, I was, you know, it'd be nice if we had those things, if we had a hotel, so people could have tournaments and stand hotels up.
Absolutely. I think CSA is mostly tournaments, but maybe not forgot to mention, but we also have to use for our youth program, use Canterbury Basketball Courts. And so we could build a facility for that.
And hockey.
CSA is more...
No, I, I didn't say, I'm just saying...
No, no, I don't think it, I don't think it would draw too much from, I think we're just looking for the local youth and local fields for that, Mike. But I agree, you know, we don't want to take away and kind of advertise it as a private hall and start renting it out to, for tournaments. I think we just want to use...
Well, if you build it, you're gonna have, you want to maximize it, so it's something...
And on the cost of it, we were, you know, a lot of these sports self-sustain, like I know for, I think it was $30,000, it was just to take care of the baseball and softball fields. They're paying out of pocket, so that would help offset the cost with their fees. They would pay to help out with the town as well. And that would go in some kind of kiddy or fund to help offset the cost of mowing and lining and that kind of stuff as well, so.
Where exactly is the property? It's on Route 7?
One of the properties that we are looking at is the Route 7 property that's by the cottages.
Okay.
It's by M&amp;O, kind of across the street. That's what Mayor Murphy was looking at many years ago.
And how many acres are there?
Yeah, yeah, north. I believe it's about 50 acres, there's 82 altogether, but about, probably about 30 of those acres we would not want. The rest of those acres is pretty flat that we would take a look at.
And so who owns that currently?
Kimberly Clark.
Kimberly Clark? And they're, they're willing to sell it?
They're willing to talk to us.
Talk to us.
Correct.
Get him to the table.
Are you looking for a donation or?
That'd be nice.
Looking for a good deal, right?
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Who knows?
Great.
Any other questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody.
Great. Mayor, item 7B is our ARPA fund. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the items, which we discussed last week, which are all listed here on the agenda, and you will go through them, and here we have backup.
Sir, second?
Second.
Oh, Walter 7? Oh. Sorry, Chris.
Oh, excuse me. Town Attorney, Attorney DeBella needs to speak something to this.
Randy?
Just to reiterate and to reinforce, as you know, this is all done, these regulations, code of federal regulations, we're all done temporary on the run. Now we have more developed regulations. One of the things that we talked about, but will need to be cognizant of, because we already talked about sending this to bond council and our auditors to make sure that these are all compliant. It looks like the conventional wisdom is that we're gonna need subrecipient contracts agreements, which adds to the bureaucracy, but it's, we're dealing with the federal government. The reason for that is because, don't forget, all these funds are audited. And we have to go through what's known as a primary recipient audit. And we have to provide monitoring for the use of the funds by the subrecipients.
Each one?
Each one, yeah. So you probably saw this one coming, Dave. That wasn't in the original, in the original act, that was a field act. But, but the fact is, no problems, we'll do it, but it's gonna be another level of monitoring and draftmanship.
Right, it's gonna take time to do it, and then it would be onus on the town to monitor that all was being done properly.
Yes, the pass-through entity remains responsible for the ultimate use of the funds. Now, I'll caucus with our auditor and I'll caucus with our bond council to see if we can get a good agreement together. I haven't discussed this with Director Ossipow, because I'm still working on the team that I'm gonna need to put together. Just to let you know, it's just a, it's just another step in the bureaucratic process.
And probably necessary.
And they're taxing it in Washington, and they dole it out, and then they tell the side of food, and they put all these orders, things on us to... Love big government.
But better before than after, right?
I'd rather it be now.
Exactly, yes.
I'd just rather than lower the taxes for everybody, so the town has more money to spend it how they will. Who am I, in the perfect world?
Dream on, Mike.
Do you have a motion on the table here?
Yes, we do.
You call the questions?
Well, we didn't...
Well, one of the things I wanted to say, Tom, was when you're looking at some of the fire department numbers here, like with Water Witch, some of the numbers, here's the full amount that wasn't put in here. So for instance, when we first talked about this a few weeks ago, we talked about having a washer and a dryer.
Yes.
That wasn't put, that wasn't putting on there?
Yes, we had only the drying cabinet.
And so the thing only had the drying cabinet on here?
What's the washer?
So it's, it's in here. So we have, so for, just using Water Witch first, when you look at the packet that was put here, and we have Chief Squires, and we have Lieutenant Sean as well, so they can answer any questions we have. But in this packet, you have the boat that they had requested, that was for $21,435.52.
The boat?
It's this first one right here.
Oh, okay.
It's right here?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I'm looking at this.
Yeah.
Was our motion on the agenda need to be amended at that time?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so the...
Discreetly, after all the years of sitting here, I don't need to hear what these gentlemen have to say. I believe everything they're asking.
Right, okay, so, I'm sorry.
So you have $21,435.52. And these were in the, these were in the books two weeks ago.
Right, okay. So the boat is $21,435.52?
That's just for the boat.
Okay, got it.
And then they have the MaxiForce...
Airbag?
That's an airbag, right, too? The MaxiForce and the Fish V6S Thruster Protectors, that's $4,571.39. Then the Hummingbird Solus 12 Chirp Mega SIG III, that's $2,623.26. Then the Arizona Fortex Bright Complete with Feet, $5,0274.70. And then you have the drying cabinet.
We did have that.
Yep, you have, here's where it's broken out here, Katie, the washer...
Okay, then I'm writing it, go ahead.
Was $14,842.
Yep. The drying cabinet, $76.22?
No, the drying cabinet here, this is the one, right? Sean, $12,934. That's the one.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Mayor, the drying cabinet was how much?
$12,934.
That's, that's a change then.
Yes.
Addition and a change.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, how much difference? Is this higher or lower?
It's higher.
Higher.
By...
From what they've requested there? Uh...
I mean, it's fine, I was just curious.
I'd say about, from this one here, probably about 15, 16 grand, I'm thinking.
And Mayor, is the underwater, I'm looking at you guys, is the underwater sonar still in here?
Yeah, that's the thrust.
That's the thrust.
Oh, that's the V?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, okay. Got it.
Okay, and then you also received, Northville gave us theirs, which you already have, which is for the turnout gear, the portable radios, seven mobile radios, replacement fire nozzle, fire gear dryer, mobile fire gear storage rack.
All as on...
Right, chief?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So nothing changed on Northville?
Right.
No change to that.
Right.
Right?
And then Gaylardsville, you guys have a request from Fire Chief Bergman for the portable radios, the Lucas CPR, the automated defibrillators, their 15 set of turnout gear, vacuum spine board set, two backboards for spinal immobilization, the two backboard strap set, Stokes basket, and two thermal imaging cameras.
Okay, so...
That's, that's the...
That's the total on the front page and...
That's theirs.
Yeah, I got that. So we have a total of $311,392. Correct? Right, for Gaylardsville?
And then...
Okay.
Kyle? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everything was covered there.
Okay. And then we have, let's see, continuing to move on, we have IT, which is in the, which is in your handout. This was from a couple of weeks ago as well. And Dave, can you give kind of a brief update to the council concerning the infrastructure, the IT?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would imagine everyone's looking at the quote or the... You got it right there, sir. Mr. Speaker, yeah, you got it right there. So this is intended to tackle pretty much the tail end of what I've been trying to replace and renew over the last two-plus years. I'm just gonna go down from the top. The first section is going to be for the firewalls. Those are your moat around your castle, that is your outside defense. Hard to understate how important that can be. The one we have now is growing a bit long in the tooth and actually going to be end-of-life end-of-support from the manufacturer. So it's something that needs to be addressed, and this is a great opportunity to do it. The last line of that first is for the VPN to cover us for five years. The VPN is what facilitates our ability to never close the town, be it because... The VPN is what facilitates our ability to never close the town, be it because of a global pandemic or a snowstorm. If our town staff have access to Intranet still, and a lot of them even have mobile hotspots, Town Hall never needs to close. The town can still be available to its community, to its constituents. Of course, our DPW team don't have the opportunity to close, but for the rest of staff who are doing office work, you know, their office doesn't shut down. Really hard to understate how important that can be, especially in what we're facing the last two years. The PD doesn't really work remotely, so they don't have that license on their firewall quote, but they also have a firewall because they have a separate connection from the town by way of our internet service provider. Next section down is going to be labeled the Mobile Device Management. That allows the IT department to manage mobile devices, to locate them if they're lost or stolen, or wipe them if need be, so sensitive data is not compromised, allows us to manage the applications that are pushed out to devices, configure them in a safe manner, make sure that they are being used appropriately. Next section down is Wireless Access Points. The first grouping there you're going to see is for the outdoor wireless access points. Those are intended for the town green. One way or another, the intention is to get that off of the ground, and we are in final talks now with Charter Communications to make that happen. This is our alternate plan to make sure that one way or another that plan goes through and we make that happen. Underneath that is the subsection labeled Meraki Wireless Access Points. Those are for all our municipal buildings. Right now, this day of the wireless infrastructure in our buildings is very much subpar. There are some offices, this building is a great example. One of our offices used to be a jail cell. Service in there can be trying. It really wasn't designed for wireless in that area. So deploying wireless access points in a more concerted fashion and frankly putting more of them out there because you're not going to penetrate through that wall. It's built for a reason like that. You you put the wireless access point on the inside of that room. That's not just for Town Hall, though. That's for Town Hall, the Senior Center, JPPCC, the rest of our municipal buildings. As we're making our staff able to work in a more mobile fashion, giving them laptops, mobile devices, it behooves us to make sure that they're able to be connected no matter what offices they're in. Underneath that is the line for our DNS security. Essentially what that is, when you say I'm heading to Town Hall, you know that the address is ten Main Street. If you didn't know what that would be, you would look it up in a registry. DNS is essentially that for the Internet. I'm very much dumbing this down, but that that's the general idea there. Now, when you get a link that has, you know, say, google.com, that actually translates to some other information, it's an IP address, but no one's going to remember those addresses. So DNS allows you to translate what is human-readable into a more viable addressing system. What this specific utility does is it actually looks at all of those addresses that members of staff, anyone within our four walls is trying to access, and it proves them against a database of known safe addresses as well as the database of known malicious addresses. So if you click on something and it's malicious, it stops you in your track. So if an employee clicks on something that perhaps they shouldn't have, this kind of protects them and us from from that mistake. If there's something that they go to that sets off red flags, but it's not in a defined database, it actually quarantines it for us to take a look and see, you know, was this safe or was this something malicious? And that would be applicable to any of the Cisco gear that we've deployed, so pretty much everything north of that quote, save the managed devices, they would be protected by that system, which is why it's referred to as the umbrella. And then the final line down there is Total Care. This would facilitate for four years our staff to have essentially a deeper bench. We are a team of two people right now. And as we facilitate the organization to move outside of the bounds of their four walls, to be more mobile, just to be more engaged with technology, that does put an onus on the department. So this allows us to have essentially that deep preventive individuals with greater expertise in specific areas, primarily those of the hardware and devices that we're deploying in our organization to facilitate us to better serve our staff and do so in a timely and more hopefully secure manner. If anyone hasn't glazed over, I'm happy to ask questions.
David, in terms of security and how secure we need to be.
Yep.
Our infrastructure, how far does this get us? Does this get us all the way where we need to be? Are there still anything lacking?
So the challenge in that is the finish line is constantly moving. But with that being said, as far as the physical infrastructure that when I first walked through the front door, I determined as needing to be addressed, this gets us pretty much there. I I I know I I add a bit of a disclaimer there, but you just never know what you're going to be facing tomorrow.
No, understood.
So.
Hackers are still out there hacking.
They keep us busy.
Hackers got to hack.
Good.
Dave?
Sir?
This expires eleven twenty-seven, so.
This has been, this has been renewed.
Okay.
It has. I actually had a conversation with a gentleman.
I was going to say, you're going to have to make a phone call on Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, yeah.
On Saturday.
Well, we're here. Yeah, no, so this is actually, I had a conversation with the gentleman who helped prepare this quote today, and it's been extended out a bit longer.
Okay.
And and this was built with the intention of some budgetary considerations, actually, a couple of months ago, before we actually really had our feet underneath us with Cisco, which is part of why the wireless access points for the outdoor are there. Again, keeping them there until we know with certainty that we're going the route we're going. But yes, this is probably about three months, give or take at this point.
So on the bottom line, you mentioned that's a four-year salary. Is that what that is?
That is not a salary. That is a managed services contract. So essentially, that gives us the ability for us to pick up the phone and engage a deep preventive individuals on specific topics. Like, say, for example, there's an issue with our firewall, and Ken and I can't ascertain what the issue is, and it's causing work stoppage, as opposed to Ken and I being the only two individuals in a position to remediate that, we now have the ability to pick up a phone and at a known cost, because it's a flat rate, engage the specialists who can more expeditiously resolve the issue.
Okay. So Pete, quick question maybe for Randy as well. I know that we have a timetable to spend the money, correct? Is it like two years to spend the money?
Up to.
But we can put the money in something that's going to extend past the two years being spent.
It's expended, though. You got to be very, you have to be very careful with that.
It has to be out of our account.
Out of the account, but it could be put into another account that can go past the two years, correct?
No.
No, a four-year contract.
That's what I'm saying.
It's longer than two years.
It's got to be expended, expended within that time.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that.
We're also going to give it back.
Right.
We don't want to do that. So it really has to be, it really has to be expended within that period of time.
Okay.
So as an example, if you look for the the licensing on these, if you look at the very top line, the AnyConnect licenses, those licenses are good for five years, but we would be paying for them upfront.
Okay.
That's the expediting.
Yes, yes. Just wanted to be clear.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
So thanks, David. This is good stuff. Are we Cisco shopping?
We're getting there, yes. We just finished replacing all of our switches with a hybrid of HP and I think a Dell or two in the mix with now Meraki. Adding the Cisco and the Meraki firewalls will help us to have that single pane of glass, which from a two-person team helps.
Okay.
And we actually, we have a duo of servers currently running what was otherwise on twelve different servers. And those two are Cisco appliances as well. So we are moving in that direction.
The DNS security, is that a cloud umbrella, Cisco umbrella?
It is. It's it's based on Talos. It is, yes. It is, it's essentially, we replace the DNS provider for the firewall.
Yeah, I know the solution. It's a top-notch. To be honest, I work for a big company, forty thousand people, and we're using that too. So in cyber defense, we're using this quite a bit. So this is a top-notch stuff, pretty much. That's good.
Really municipalities have a bit of a target on their back, so I don't think that we really have the opportunity to do anything less.
How many licenses do we have for this?
This looks like a hundred and fifty, based on this quote, which ballpark covers our PD as well as our municipal staff.
So that would correlate with the MDL for the cell phones, security?
Uh, you know, I'd have to look into that.
All right. I just question, but.
Of course.
I like what I see.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Dave?
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Yep, next, we're moving on to Sullivan Farm. We have Mark here, and first part is the roof replacement. For those that know Sullivan Farm is the town-owned farm that, well, we took over, I think it was during Mayor Murphy's term, correct?
Yep.
And that has also been instrumental in giving food assistance to the community food bank, as well as teaching a bunch of kids farming. And I know we're going to try and grow more of our agritourism and agroeducation there. So Mark, if you could talk a little bit about the need for a roof on the barn?
Sure. I believe the last time the roof was replaced was in nineteen sixty. It's it's had a extended period of life. We have buckets all over the barn at this point, and the concern is that with the moisture coming in, it's going to eventually affect the frame. The barn was built in eighteen sixty-eight, and it's actually signed by the builder. It's an old English barn, and probably worth trying to save. If the roof's not replaced, it's going to be a matter of a decade or two, and the thing's going to just rot and fall down. I believe the, we had two bids. The high one was sixty-four thousand, and there was another for fifty-five thousand. That would replace the existing shingles. The the original shake roof, cedar shake roof is on that thing. So that would all come off. They put plywood on it and then put a new layer of shingles on.
Any questions?
No question but comment.
If there ever was a roof that needed to be replaced, this is it.
It'd be nice not to empty those buckets after every rain.
Yeah.
Is this something that would go through the Municipal Building Committee?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Have you investigated any other materials than shingles, asphalt shingles?
You know, all the other roofs that we've replaced on the other buildings in the farm have all been metal, but the price is exorbitant. You know, shingles seems to be the most economic way to do it. They're good for about twenty, twenty-five years.
Well, I know where it's located, too, and I, you know, I just don't want to go through, when we're in the Board of Ed, and replacing shingles every year. That gets, that gets pricey, too. And I come from a family of businessmen, too, and you get what you pay for.
True.
So if we could take a look at the other alternatives, obviously.
Be glad to.
You know, I mean.
Metal roofs are good for fifty years.
Who knows?
At least.
Hey, we can get a, we can get a package deal with all our stuff. We get a discount.
But are you saying that the current shingle roof was put on in nineteen sixty?
I believe it was put on in nineteen, yeah, it was replaced in nineteen sixty. It's had quite a life. But it's also, it's also. I have no idea. It's big.
Big, big.
Yeah.
It's the hay barn.
It's the hay barn. It's the, it's the big red barn on the side of the road.
Mark, what, the number for?
Sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-four?
Fifty-four.
Six, four.
Sixty-three, one-ten.
Sixty-three.
One-ten.
I rounded up, sorry, Will.
And that was the low bid?
That was the high bid. There was another that was a little bit lower.
The lower bid didn't have the aluminum trim metals.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Ice-water shield will be applied, two rows and then along the gutter edges, plywood seam tape.
Well, if you're going to do it, do it right.
Are gutters included?
We have gutters already on the building in the front. We really don't need them on the back because they just run right down the hill into the swamp.
So they're going to take them off and put them back on?
They would take them, they'd have to take them off and then put them back on.
How old are the gutters?
They're probably six, seven years old.
Okay, so they're fairly new.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they strapped?
They're strapped, yes.
Okay, so it'd be easy to take off.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the, any other questions on the roof? Okay, now moving over to the next part is, another discussion is, I'll speak with Mark. So Mark, as you know, was formerly our youth agency director and then is now running Sullivan Farm. Right. So.
Which I still have not received.
Double your salary.
Yeah, it's like, it's like three dollars now, the town owes me.
It's in the mail. It's in the mail.
So one of the things that Mark, that Mark brought to me as we were talking about is really a succession plan of what we need to do moving forward. So Mark, I'll let you talk a little bit about it.
Sure. We, you know, we find ourselves right now in, I think, a similar situation to most of the businesses in the area in that we have some staffing concerns. During the pandemic, we were lucky in that most of the college kids chose to do their classes virtually, and that's kind of come to an end. I've got three individuals that have graduated recently. They basically run the place now. I can leave for a day or two occasionally and come back, and it's still there. They've done an excellent job. The problem is that at any point, these individuals can get twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour by going somewhere else. We're paying minimum wage to them, thirteen, fourteen bucks an hour. I think they, and primarily their parents, are concerned about some type of security, some longevity in the positions that they have. They, for the most part, really enjoy working there, and a couple of them, I believe, are looking at this as a vocation. So you take that and you combine it with the possibility in January of a vaccine mandate, and we're looking at a situation where we would lose the bulk of our staff, which would mean we would have to close the farm. And that affects the community in a couple of different ways. First of all, this past summer, we donated over a ton of naturally grown, fresh vegetables to the food bank. With these positions, we can probably double, possibly triple that at a time when, you know, food insecurity is a major issue because of the pandemic and now inflation. At the same time, we've got several smaller farms that are bringing their produce to our farm stand and selling it. It gives them a retail outlet that they don't have at their own place. And then there are basically the hundreds of students that have been through the farm over the last two decades. It's interesting, we were talking the other day about the diversity of positions that these people have gone into, many of them. Environmental science, soil conservation, timber resource management, a lot of park rangers, couple of farmers. They basically were introduced to this when they were up there and then made it part of their educational process, and then eventually got some really great jobs, working in a variety of different areas. At the same time, prior to the pandemic, we were providing an AP classroom situation for several of the high schools in the area. Danbury, Newtown, New Fairfield would all send AP classes up, and they would basically do a lot of soil sampling, environmental scientists, nutrition, and also just how a farm works. The hope is that as the pandemic begins to hopefully get a little, you know, less, that we'll be able to take that up again. We were pushing hundreds of kids through that. Our guys, at the same time, maintain most of the town's hiking trails. We take care of the town's oldest cemetery. We do a lot of basic landscaping. And then finally, you know, in nineteen hundred, there were a hundred and sixty-four farms in the town in New Melford. Basically, you were a farmer or you provided a service to the farmer. We were an agrarian community. Sullivan Farm is extremely unique in that it's probably the only municipally-owned property in the state of Connecticut that's run by a bunch of high school and college kids. People drive by and they identify with it. It's something that, in this kind of topsy-turvy world that we're living in right now, is is a standard. It's there every day when they go by, and it's important to them. So, you know, I would hope you would give serious consideration of the possibility of funding these two positions for the two-year period so that we can kind of begin to develop, as as the mayor was discussing, a extradition plan for myself so that, you know, we can get some, some younger blood in there.
Mark, obviously, we'd love to have you there forever, but I know that's not going to happen. So what do you, this being a two-year deal, and then from that point forward, we, you know, we don't want to do any, we're not allowed to do things that put a burden on the budget. So you have farm crew supervisor and assistant. Are you talking about one person?
I'm talking about two, yeah, two people.
Okay, so it's not a year-round type of position? Okay, so it's not a year-round type of position?
This would be a full-time seasonal position. It would be ten months.
Right. So like, as with the friends, we discussed that, and we had a manager who also learned a lot there and went on to become and still having a fantastically career in New Britain and is doing crazy things. So I'm all about wanting to do that. I just wonder what the burden would be. What do you, what's your estimate of what this seasonal position slash two maybe would, what do you think it'll be, so that two years from now, what would we be left trying to fund?
So I think, you know, you have two questions. The first is, I think to make it competitive, we need to be probably in around the forty thousand a year range.
Each?
Each. And again, we're looking at probably overlapping, so one position would be gone in November and December, the other December and January. It gives us two years to take a look at other ways to develop revenue sources. So it's not a question of coming back here at the end of the two years and going, oh, by the way, we need eighty thousand dollars a year. We would develop some sort of, you know, new revenue system that would pick, pick up the slack for these.
Having been involved with this, I have to say, one of the hardest things to find is somebody who does not live near the farm, because as we know, most people live on the farms, and we had somebody who fortunately had a place right near there. But to have somebody be a full-time person, I think the two is a great idea. So you're saying overall per annum would be around eighty?
Yes.
Right, okay. So if we were lucky enough to find somebody who could be close as a full-time person, whatever, gotcha. Great idea.
So it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for two years?
Well, that's what we'd have to replace.
Right. I think there's definitely revenue streams that could happen off that property over the years. It would be figured out.
Sure.
I agree. My only problem is, I think forty grand is a tough sell in this day and age.
But that's a half a year.
Ten months.
Ten months.
Not even ten, though, if you really overlap them correctly, I think.
Well, each, each would basically be there for ten months.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you're really overlapping them.
Well, no, yeah, two months. So it's four months where there's only one person.
I think it's a great idea, too, and I wouldn't burden ourselves with, you know, concerning about revenue. It's about what the Sullivan Farm stands for and what it does. You can't put a price tag on the careers you've launched. You can't put a price tag on when we stop and get, you know, fresh corn and things like that. I think if we remove that from the equation and we see what we have, you can't always measure it in dollars. You can't. You know, you know, getting somebody into being a park ranger, the one or two that did become a farmer, and those, that is, those are our roots, and I think we should honor them. I think it's a wonderful thing, and, you know, it expands to educational, you know, with outside of New Milford. Let's not put a dollar amount on it.
No, but I think it's good.
Let's not put a dollar amount on it. I'm not saying don't consider it.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's like.
Well, it's two years to see, as Mark said, right?
Forty thousand. I'm not even sure you're going to find someone for forty thousand.
Did you say they were college students?
Well, they got two people right now.
Yeah, we have, we have about four individuals up there right now that are working for us that have either graduated from college or, you know, working on masters, and, you know, they've expressed an interest in, you know, making this, their lives work.
And these are, these are young.
And these are folks that are making minimum wage, as you mentioned.
Excuse me?
You mentioned this before. These are folks that are making minimum wage and love being there.
They're making, they're making thirteen, fourteen bucks an hour right now.
So I think it's a great way to try it, like you said, and see, see what could be developed, because you can't really play around with, so to speak, not that I think they're playing, but you really can't try things out if you don't have people that you, that can be invested in, such as you have been. So we've tried out a lot of things. But to your point, Dave, you know, that's why fixing that roof is important.
Of course.
Without that barn.
Well, yeah.
I have to agree with Katie, though. I think that two weeks, two years is a good time to try and get, find what you can do in that. I mean, it's, I understand your point, David, but you definitely can figure out how to make, make some form of income out of that land.
It's a hundred and nine acres. It's a large piece of property.
I didn't say you're not going to get income. I just said, let's not make that a top priority. That's all. Top priority should be preserving that space for generations to come.
But if you preserve that space.
That should be our top priority, okay? What you get in income, that's fabulous. What you can generate in income, that's wonderful. If we can pay for the whole thing, that's beautiful.
Well, the town's always supported the farm, as Mark knows.
I, I think that should be our number one consideration, rather than the dollars and cents, dollars and cents.
Yeah, I care about the taxpayers, so I'd like, I'd like.
Well, I do, too. And this is, offers the taxpayers an opportunity and an area to enjoy as well.
Right.
I mean, you know.
So this would be two more, two other positions, Mayor, sort of along the lines of the one with the violence, whatever her name is.
Crisis investor.
Crisis, that's it. That's the word. Yeah.
Family crisis.
Good thinking, Mark.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
We'll work on getting that three bucks.
Go empty those buckets. After you empty the buckets, though, okay?
Next is Park and Rec, and speaking with Laura Murphy. A couple of items that had come up before, and we're bringing back is first the disc golf course.
Yes.
And this was mentioned many years ago.
Remember him?
And this is something that people can do by themselves or in teams. So if COVID happens to, we happen to go back down where we have to do more things individually, this would be a good activity for people to do, be outside. We did talk with, because this would be stationed at Clatter Valley, we did talk to Bridgewater. Bridgewater gave us permission because their, part of the land would be in Bridgewater as well to do this disc golf course, and they agreed. And then the other piece is the outdoor movie theater. So during COVID, when we were pretty much on a lot of lockdown, we were doing some movies in tandem with the Bank Street Movie Theater. We were doing them at John Pettibone. We're having these free events, family events that were very successful. Some of the things is if this is approved by the town council and Board of Finance and the public, is to continue to do these type of events, whether they be on the green, whether they be at Pettibone, or at Lindemee at night. We could open it up, have a wonderful event there so people could enjoy our parks. So as you see, those are the two numbers there that you have in your deck for the disc golf course and for the outdoor movie theater.
Both of these are expenditures, it's terrific.
For Park and Rec to bring forward.
The movie theaters, is it, are they still doing the conjunction with?
Yes, because we would have to, to get the actual movie itself, and Bank Street's been tremendous partners.
What Gary's done for this town is unbelievable.
Absolutely. They always have. And this, you know, some of the, when we talked about doing this at Lindemee, we were talking about doing that this past summer, you know, they were hesitant about bringing their, their theater up that way, where, you know, we could bring it there, we could watch it, you know, we could, because it's, you know, our park, our area. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Plus, if we could borrow theirs, maybe one time we would do one on the green and maybe ask Tyler in Galleville if we could do one up at the Galleville fairgrounds, because we really haven't done a lot up in Galleville. I asked Tyler if we could maybe in the spring use the fairgrounds to do some music events up in Galleville for our residents up there as well.
Great.
So.
Excellent.
Okay. Any questions?
So, does somebody remember when the young man came to talk about the disc golf?
Oh, yeah.
Eagles guy.
Eagles guy, absolutely.
He started, I mean, there's stuff there.
He must be married and have a family by now.
He came in, he came in front of us. He came in front of us when I was on the Park and Rec. He came in front of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice kid.
Got his own team. Way to go.
And then the last one is primary capital loans. This we talked about in the very beginning. And this is the program where we would have residents experiencing a financial hardship, but they have a major capital item within their home. So whether it be a hole in the roof, or a furnace that's blown, or a septic issue, or drainage. And they've fallen on hard times, and rather than let the house decay and become worse and worse off, which then drives the value of everybody's house in the neighborhood down, it gives them the opportunity to get the problem fixed. We aren't, we have this program already in town, but this has defunded even more. And what happens is the cost of the project then would be added to title. So when, and if they ever refinanced or sold the property, those funds would come back to the town. Torrington has been very successful in doing this. I believe their revolving loan fund like this is about eleven million dollars now. And this gives us a great opportunity to kickstart this. We've tried to apply several times, and the state's just not in the mood for granting these, this particular item. They were doing other capital items. But this gives us a wonderful opportunity, and we have residents that have called and have asked for this, and I think it's a wonderful endeavor to stabilize the neighborhood, keep people in their houses that are going through a rough time. And then the town obviously gets this money back again, whether through refinance or a purchase of the property, and we could continue to just work within the fund. And I'm asking for two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Yeah.
How much is it now?
I believe right now there's about ninety thousand, eighty, ninety thousand.
Okay, so we're good.
Yep. And every once in a while, they've, I think about four months ago, we had one person that refinanced. So they put that, and this loan's been out about eight or nine years ago. And so that money now comes back and we can reinvest.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful mechanism how it works.
Great idea. Great. So that's covered everything?
So just keep the, I'm sorry, Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have a question going back to the burn building on the fire. I failed to ask it.
Yep, sure.
Want to do it now?
Yep.
I know the quote doesn't include lighting, site work, that sort of thing. Do we have an idea of how much that part of it would cost?
So the site work is if we were going to put it at Century Rasp, which I suggest is where we would, DPW, we could do the site work our own selves with that. Lighting, I would say we'd have to bring that out to bid, and this particular project would go to bid anyway.
Yeah.
So we would put it in the bid process of what, what we would do with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So what are we looking at here?
And then, just as a tally for everything, so if we were to approve tonight, this tranche of funding, you're looking at one million, five hundred and eighty thousand, nine sixty-two, seventeen?
As discussed tonight would be.
As discussed tonight, correct. Now, with that being said, one million, five hundred and eighty thousand, nine sixty-two, seventeen.
One point three left.
Now, we, we did our first one, which has already been approved, and that was the first tranche, which was the domestic violence, family advocate, the New Milford ambulance, the arts commission, the nonprofits, the reservoir, the fire marshal, including software, foreclosure, foreclosure rental assistance, the freezer for social services, the police department, public safety, deescalator, and business loans and grants. That particular tranche itself and the dam, the one point two, was three million, seventeen, three million, seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three, twelve. At our last meeting before this meeting, which was on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, the council approved a motion for the youth agency counselors of two twenty-five, childcare assistance of a hundred thousand, New Milford Senior Center Advisory Board, seventy-five thousand, one thirty-seven, seventy-five, Brownsville Grant Community Challenge of five hundred thousand, Pettibone Community Center of a hundred and fifty thousand. So when you add up, and that was one million, fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven, seventy-five. So if you add, let's take the first two, which would have been, the one that's already, the first one, which has already been approved for three million by everything, so that's already done. Then you have the second tranche, I'll call it tranche number two, that was from the October twenty-fifth. That was from one million, fifty, one thirty-seven, seventy-five. That would give you a total, if that gets approved by Board of Finance and Public, then that would be four million, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven. And then if you were to approve the, the, the numbers tonight of one million, five eighty-nine, sixty-two, seventeen, that would give us expended, if it went through the whole system with everything, five million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, four sixty-three, oh, four.
Okay.
At a seven point nine million.
Right.
And I'll, and I will go through the numbers again, and I will verify them all for us and send it out tomorrow as well, and make sure I did the math correctly.
It means about two.
Two point two million left.
Two zero five.
Five, three, six, nine, six.
Yep. I hope you guys spend it wisely while I'm gone.
We'll do our best. We might get a raise, you never know.
So Katie, could you make a motion?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did make a motion, but I'm going to amend my motion just to add the dollar value. We had a motion, and we had a second to approve the ARPA funds as listed. So we're going to add, that was done. So we're going to add through that, right, Stephanie? You got that?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay. So we're going to add in that the total for this tonight comes to one million, five hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven?
Two dollars.
Sixty-two dollars.
Seventeen.
Oh, the seventeen cents, I forgot that part. Okay.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Dave?
Yes. I'd like to add twelve, thirteen thousand dollars to that, and that would be a two-year trial to give seniors a pass to our parks, including a free movie pass.
Thirteen thousand? Oh, two years.
Yeah, two years.
Gotcha.
Sixty-five and sixty-five.
So Dave, how did you come up with that number?
That's what I've been asking for a while, how much it costs for seniors. I can take a look for it if you'd like, but it was sixty-five hundred is what it was, if I stand to be corrected.
In the, did it come up to about six?
Oh, I'm sorry, six thousand.
Six, yeah.
Six thousand, and that was on January eleventh, when I asked that question.
I, I like what you're, what you're thinking, but I would say let's bring in Jasmine, and let's bring in Dan, because I think that number's going to more than likely triple. Because if you're offering it free to all the seniors, that's only the few seniors that, that took advantage of that.
Yeah, I, I understand, but it wouldn't cost you.
Yeah, that's the revenue.
That's the revenue. That's the revenue. I'm just saying reimburse the Parks and Rec for their, quote, lost revenue. How many people use it? I think, again, that's, that's what we're trying to foster here, is do people utilize what we have. That's part.
We don't have to adjust amendment tonight. We have, we can discuss it next time.
Well, I kind of hope when you would, because.
Well, it's November, I'm sure. I'm sure they won't be using it in January.
I just want to ask this, though, Dave. Remember, we're still in the ARPA area, so this is, it has the guidelines, which I'm not saying this would work, but then when this, say it's thirteen thousand goes away, we then would be burdening the budget.
Well, you can call it a burden.
No, I, you know, I don't think of it as a burden.
I don't think it's a burden. I, I think it's something that, and I've articulated it before, you know, it's particularly problematic for me when we come into June and July, and I see these, now granted, this year's we won't use, but in years past, there is well more than thirteen thousand dollars in our surplus. I mean, we're talking five, six hundred thousand, millions, a million dollars. Again, this year was atypical, so we won't go there. But if you look at your five, last five years, five, ten years, and we have substantial surpluses, and, you know, thirteen thousand dollars out of a million, I think we can do it. We're choosing not to. And if we want to choose not to, that's fine. That's okay.
Mike's have a question for the mayor.
The point is, we discuss stuff, you get the background, and then we go next time. I don't know why we have to amend tonight's meeting. Why can't we just put it on for discussion?
But this brings up just a point, Mike, that I think the mayor could, when we did talk about this, we, we found that the Parks and Rec would not charge people who just said they couldn't pay it.
Well, I know, but that's not a very good system.
So what I'm asking, but just a second, I'm asking is, do we know? So what I'm asking, but just a second, I'm asking is, do we know what kind of burden, for lack of that? What, what happened to their, in their P and L because of that? Were there, do we know how many people got a free pass?
Well, I'm not saying it's a burden. I'm saying it's a privilege.
I'm not saying it's a burden in that term of the word, Dave, and you know I don't mean that. I'm saying is that if Parks and Rec suffered any diminishing of their income because they allowed X number of seniors to go in free, which they do, I'm just curious, do we know how many?
It was, I can get you that number.
It might, it might be more, might be less, Dave. I'm fine with it, but.
It was, I don't wanna give you.
Yeah, it's okay.
A number and be wrong, but it wasn't.
It's an amenity.
But I'm, what I'm saying is if we're gonna use that number, right? We need to quantify it by how many seniors are in New Milford, times that amount. Not how many, which is in the revenue number, because that's gonna be.
That's fine.
If we're giving away free senior passes, every senior.
Making the assumption every senior's gonna take advantage of it.
I, I think.
Then if you think they would, then it's a good thing to do. That's exactly.
And what I'm saying, Dave, is if we're gonna do that, then we need to quantify that number and not say.
Feel that people will take advantage of it.
Thousand and then I come back to the council and say, oh, by the way, it's fifty thousand, forty thousand.
That was their, that was their income in the first place. If, that's, that's your base number. Personally, I don't even think it should be anything.
Population is in the thousands.
That's excellent.
So, yes, I agree and you and I both agree to that. We all here pretty much agree to that.
Yeah, that didn't come out right, did it?
Yeah, right. But I think that if, if that's the case and we're gonna do it, then I think we should have the real numbers. And I don't know, maybe this isn't the fun.
Make the motion at the next meeting that on behalf of David Lawson, our retirees.
Will you?
That we give whatever number comes up so that David gets.
The Lawson Act.
The Lawson Act is done on this.
And please, let the ministry reflect this. And again, do it for a two-year period because it may not be feasible. And you're right, it may not be. It could.
Then you take it away from people and you're.
Well, you know what? No, it's not hard to do, not if, we could be taken away a domestic uh violence counselor.
I know you'll be gone, but Tom has offered to bring it up on your behalf and, you know, in your name. But could we, could we get the information? Cause there's still another bunch of things we're gonna go through, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And Dave, lastly, just for the numbers, we look at seniors different. So, the senior center says a senior is.
Sixty.
Sixty.
Oh, gotcha.
Right.
Yep, yep.
And there's quite a few in that five-year range.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, yeah.
So you're with it if we.
I was going with the sixty-five.
Gotcha.
So is it good? You could even come back and make sure that Tom represents you?
I'm, I'm gonna be with Doug in Florida.
Okay, so my, my motion was one million, five hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents. We have a second, Mr. Skelly, for two times now?
Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Oppose any abstentions. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, item number eight, um, motion to approve the job description for a new position that we discussed. This crisis social worker slash counselor, this is the two-year position that's created through the ARPA funds and we have a description of it and I think we have an HR guy here too.
Thank you. And we have um Ivana who's here and also we have Greg Bolero, Director of HR. So this, as we said, is a brand-new position. I believe we're gonna be the first in the state with this position. Uh, I had asked uh Ivana and I'd asked um Greg to help create this position as well as, if you guys wanna come up to the to the, to the stand. We also asked the Women's Center to help us create this position and help us come up with the verbiage for the position as well. Correct, Ivana?
That is correct, yeah. The executive director is extremely helpful in this, trying to zone in on this.
Absolutely. And uh, you could see that was, this is the makeup of the position with the input of all the parties. Does anybody have any questions? Dave?
Yeah, um, the minimum qualifications, education, um, I think a master's degree in social work is excellent. But then we get to, or a bachelor's in a related field with significant experience, work, experienced work with high-risk populations and crisis intervention sounds very subjective to me, very subjective and very, very difficult to measure and define.
I agree.
And uh, I, I, I would really prefer some sort of certification. I, I, I think there should be an alternate, you know, qualification, I get that, but there, without a certification in that type of work, it, it really concerns me and uh for the following reasons. If you're not a certified counselor and you're counseling and something happens, then it goes to the guy behind me. And uh, I wouldn't like to see that happen.
Kate?
Um, absolutely. I agree with what Dave just said as, as far as the uh degree. The other thing that uh I question is, it says bilingual and Spanish preferable. I'd like to see that uh must be. We have, um, Ivana knows this better than I do probably, but the, we have enough families and enough incidences in everyday life here that we need somebody who can speak Spanish. Uh, and the military experience strongly preferred. I really am glad that you see you put that there because that is one, one way. And my other question is, the um person would work and take, the community care coordinator would work in tandem with them as far as referencing or referring or pointing out people. And that would be Justin Colmer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Justin works in hand-in-hand with the police department. So I'm assuming, because I don't necessarily see it listed here, and this would, person would report to social service director. Because of the violence that we're, we obviously have to deal with and we brought this up in the first place for the crisis part, where does the police department um come into play with this person?
So, great question, Katie. I know when I first was talking to Ivana and we were talking to the Women's Center, I had thought this person would kinda be one of the first peoples on scene, but, and speaking of the Women's Center, they said absolutely not. This person would be kind of the next day, so you have the police, let's say it was an event that was uh, and Ivana, correct if I'm wrong, but same as event where uh law enforcement was to be called in. Then it would be law enforcement, Justin, then the referral then would go to the Women's Center, right? And then after the Women's Center to manage would then be this person.
Right. So that's, that's my question, is that they would go to the facility that exists for this type of thing now, if we never had this, which we don't have, this person, and that is where they go. So they would go there and then the intelligentsia there would know if it was time to involve this person. Great.
Can you first, Dave and Katie, both ask a question about the qualifications. Can you guys discuss some of the, why you put, put it on there that you don't need the master's in social work and some of the other things?
Um, the broadening of that uh qualification was to acknowledge that somebody may not have pursued a master's degree but have spent um a significant amount of years working as a crisis counselor um in the domestic violence um or related field. And we wanted to um invite those candidates to show what they have to offer and see if, if they would actually fit the bill.
Yeah, you can, you can pick them and act like they're some of these stuff.
But we've done.
Too strict in it.
Well, okay, so this is something, I know Greg and I have gone over enough job descriptions over the years, that there is a way to, to deal with that, to say that if you find a person that you feel has enough of their own real-life experience, that they involve themselves in pursuit of this. Because there's also liabilities, I think, when it comes to a job like this and we've already experienced a couple of times something like that. And I would like to know that if uh someone is helped by this person, who's definitely an employee of the town, that, that we don't find out at some point that someone claims that they weren't given the proper help, for just lack of a better term.
One of the things that we did talk about, Ivana, was I spoke with the Veterans Commissioner, Veterans Affairs, Tom, Tommy Sadi.
Yes.
And one of the things we looked at, which is why we put veterans in, veterans prefer, there are some veterans uh that are in the guard or maybe have retired. It's specialized through the MP program or they specialize in domestic violence that may not have a master's degree, but have. Yeah, but have a lot of certification and everything.
But working toward.
Absolutely.
Accepted.
I, I think adding the word certified in there, I don't think is, is, I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah, I have a problem with the certified piece too. I mean, usually.
Not including it or including it?
Including it, because I feel like most um certifications come on the master's level. Like if you're gonna be a master's in um, you know, marital therapy, whatever. It, it's usually always on the master's level. It's not on the bachelor's level. So I think that's, that's a mistake.
But you have fifty thousand dollars. Mary Jane, you know.
I don't think fifty thousand dollars, and that's another thing I wanna bring up personally. I don't think fifty thousand is enough.
I don't either.
So I think we need to add to that. I have a couple other concerns and um, one is um provides short-term counseling. Now, if you're gonna be doing counseling, you need to be licensed.
Well, Mary Jane, the short-term counseling has been a standard in, in the job descriptions for all the social workers. And what that means is it, it, it's, it's counseling in the broader sense of the sense that we're assessing need, we're assessing risk and then referring out to long-term counseling.
I know, I think you should take the word counseling out because I think it adds liability. So, um.
Because you're assessing the risk and the experience and expertise of the person doing the assessing is what would be called into question if something were to be called into question at some point.
You need um LCSW to do the counseling.
So, well, I mean, I'm an LMSW and I'm gonna do short, I mean, you know, when I'm sitting in front of a person as a, as a licensed masters in social work or my masters in social work, social workers, they're going to do a, a, a short-term um assessment of need and there's going to be crisis intervention at the moment that we need in order to um assess the person and be able to get through the situation. But we could look at an alternative word as counseling, but that's, that was, was intended for the broader sense.
Yeah, I think you need a different word in there for the liability.
How did they come, how'd you come up with that?
Came up with, was, was in line with our current social workers that we have, work for social services.
But we don't have anyone who could fit this.
Well, I'm saying let's, let's see what, see what the market brings and if it's more.
Okay, so, well, I was asking them really, how did you come up with the fifty? Is this something that you?
So one of the things that we looked at, the social workers within social services are currently in the mid-fifties and didn't feel comfortable bringing somebody in at a level above where our established employees already are.
Well, maybe that's the problem. You need to raise all those salaries. They're like grossly underpaid.
I, I think this is not the same as what we have if we, because that's why we want it and need it and I.
Okay.
I have another, one other question. Could I just finish? I don't get the military piece. Could you please explain the military experience piece to me, please? What, what is that about?
So um basically it was something, again, that um the mayor just mentioned where he spoke to um folks within the, the military who have um a lot of experience in uh crisis management and thought they could broaden that scope and bring in a different perspective. So it was just, it was inviting that perspective along to see if we can't gain somebody who has, through their um military experience, through working with crisis um within a specific population to broaden that to the larger population. So the mayor thought that.
Well, I don't think you should have strongly preferred.
I think you look at Justin Colmer's experience, his military experience. The guy's been fabulous.
Yep.
And largely, I know it was military.
Mary Jane's right, you're limiting, you're limiting that job to.
You're strongly preferred. That's, you're not saying required.
That's appropriate to be in the job description.
Military experience is a, a positive or something. I mean, I'm not sure how to put more into it, but putting it strongly preferred, kind of.
Well, you can put preferable as we can do it by uh.
I wouldn't even put preferable. I don't think you should put anything. Military experience.
Put all applicants and welcome including veterans.
I think we all honor our veterans and if there's an opportunity to have someone here.
Degree though, correct?
Yeah.
Right, they would still, even with the military experience, they'd still have many jobs.
But I, I don't think you should be strongly preferred.
So Mary Jane?
I disagree. I, I'll stick.
What's her question?
I support that military strongly.
I don't, I don't support it at all.
I don't think you would.
I wanted to jump back to salary real quick. I'm of the belief the salary is low, but I'm also understand the issue you're in. However, um, as we know, uh, we've just established a subcommittee to deal with this.
Correct.
And I think that's, I think uh, you know, and again, we're not in a real timeline. So for salary, you could put salary dependent upon qualifications, you know, rather than a number.
I guess.
What I'm saying is we might be able to figure something out salary-wise um, once the charge of the subcommittee, which I believe is March, we still have time. I understand the urgency though.
This is ARPA money.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right. We have, we have time to spend it. However, the nature of the position is urgent. That's, that's all right.
I personally would say, why don't we put it out and see what the market says? And maybe, and maybe, guess what? Maybe with a compensation package that the town has already, maybe we do get that person. And if we don't, we can come back to the council and say, guess what? The market showed that that wasn't there, but let's, let the market decide.
Well, yes, but I think it's also important that the person who's going to be looking this over and verifying and vetting and interviewing, that we don't have this person now and you compared it to people we have in that range, okay? There are crisis workers in other towns around the country. I, I, you know, we're not gonna be totally unique with this. I just would hate to see that we bring in what we already have. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what we have, but we don't have somebody who specializes in this. So I, I guess, uh, as the mayor said, see what it, see what it, what comes forward.
Right.
Um, I just, it just seems to me a low, lower than one might expect for the, what we're asking for.
And I think it brings us all back to the point that um our social workers are grossly underpaid.
Well, that's another reason I think it showed up that this would be what they're, you know, where you're at with that and that could be true too.
Absolutely.
Mike?
So I guess, and first of all, I think this is a good idea, this position, but you guys, we have to think hard and, hard and strong about whether we're gonna run again in two years, cause we're gonna have some tough decisions to make, cause we're putting a lot of stuff on here that we're gonna have to in two years, have, we have no more money left. We're gonna have to cut this person's position, which has become very important, cut the solve and farm version. We have to be careful that we're at, no, I mean, in, in two years, this position is gonna be very important, it's gonna be very important to the town. We're gonna have to make a decision to keep it or not because it's now on the budget. So we have to be careful. We've, we're keep adding things on that, you know, capital improvements, I get those a lot, but when you start adding salaries, a decision in two years is gonna have to be made.
So Mike?
That's why the guideline says don't burden your budget.
I, but we're doing that.
Well, that's for us to, I think we need, when this is all over and all these things are done, we have our attorney to look at that.
That's a phenomenal question and one that I know in the very beginning, I kinda thought myself and posed the thing of, what is the unintended consequence if we don't? So the data points when I was talking with the chief of police, one of the main data points that we saw is that domestic violence throughout the country has done nothing but escalate due to COVID, right? So if we weren't to be proactive in that, what could happen, if we're looking at a purely economic thought process, is now we may have to have more police on overtime to deal with more domestic violence.
I'm not saying we don't add it. I'm just saying.
I'm just, I'm just saying that.
In two years, it's, we're gonna have to say, okay, we wanna keep.
I, I, I agree, but we'll have the data points and the data sets to to, to warrant whether we do that or not. And I do agree with that.
No, we're upfront about it being a two-year position. I mean, it's, it's really clear.
And is it possible that in the middle of this, let's say one year into this, mayor, that we realize the, the high degree of need, right? That this could then, the, the council could be sitting here and say, you know, this is clearly something that we want to continue and with that person or who knows what we might do. So there, there is the potential that it becomes a permanent because we know, but there's, right, or maybe it doesn't.
And that's why when this was first brought up, I, I said, uh, and I still say this, we need metrics and, and we need a baseline today. The population this is serving, how widespread is it? So, for example, we've got our community care coordinator. We know that opioid uh overdoses have gone down. We know that opioid overdoses have gone down in our town, as opposed to anywhere else. We know our homeless population has dropped.
Right? So those, those are great metrics. We need that for this, and that means you need to start now with baselining this population now. So in two years, we can say, hey, boy, it didn't help.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. However, when we're dealing with something like this, if we have one person, just one, it's worth your investment.
I, I don't subscribe to that.
I know you don't, I know. I cannot put the quality of a person's life, okay, a number on it. I can't. If it were one of your family members, or even a friend, okay, how would you feel? You know, oh, well, we don't need that anymore, you're on your own. And I think what we're talking about here is a whole safety net, not safety net, but a whole tying in all our services, youth services, tying in our social services, our, our nonprofits, bringing them all together to come up with what we need as a, as a town. I mean, you know, with drug issues, yeah, okay.
Well, this wasn't need.
Yeah, I know it's a need.
This was not filled, you know, so.
Oh, I know, I know it's a need. And, you know, as I said, even if it's one person, I mean, what do you have to have? 10 cases to justify your position?
You need to show an improvement, is what you need.
Well, unfortunately, we can't predict human behavior, that's the problem.
But you can have data that tracks it.
So I just have one, I have one question.
And we will, we will have the data.
From, away from what we're talking about here. I, I, I know that this is, what we're, what was moved and seconded was that to accept the job description as it is written. And I think having some time to look this over, you know, and maybe come back and look at it.
I think that's a good idea.
Because it's not the ARPA funding that we're voting on. We've already decided that this was an, an viable thing, right? But I think that the, talking about our committee that's looking things over, not saying that we know more than you did, or whatever, but the idea is, this is the first that there's been a discussion about it, the description. And that description is gonna play heavily into the people that come forward, and what you view as good, bad, or indifferent. So I, I would like to take a little more time to look this over, and maybe take the comments made by people, by councilpeople, mayor, and.
Bring this back to the next meeting.
Hold on.
It shouldn't be much of a talk.
We, we kicked the word around, and what, what is really nervous about this is lack of the word certification. I think if we get someone that, and master's degree is wonderful. Experience is wonderful, but without certification, I think you've put the community between a rock and a hard place, and it becomes a slippery slope. So I think this ought to be tabled and rework qualifications.
No, it's a pretty detailed job description. It's pretty, it's pretty inclusive of just about everything. I mean, when you start reading demonstrated ability to apply principles and practices of economic, psychosocial, so, social, medical factors applied to high-risk, this person has to come in with a ton of knowledge. This is not, this is not a secretarial job.
Correct.
So, this is a big job. And $50,000 is not enough.
And, and a liability is.
And a liability. I really think the word counseling needs to come out of there for liability reasons.
A motion to table. Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, a quick discussion. Table to our next meeting, I don't wanna join up into the black hole.
Absolutely.
Go, next meeting.
Just mid-deck.
Be the next meeting.
Yeah, this one.
Your next meeting.
And will you come to the meeting, will you come to the subcommittee?
Thank you. Ethan's here.
We already had one.
Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
I sent you an email.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, so now we move down to item number nine, which is the Finance Department update.
So Greg is on vacation, but he wanted me to read this to the council and the public. The town has made an offer for the position of comptroller, which was subsequently accepted. As we know, Olga had taken on the position as the finance director of New Fairfield. Subject to satisfactory background check, the new person will start December 6th, introduced to the council on the same day.
December 6th, did you say?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
The town received the first installment of the ECS funds from the state in the amount of $2,781,047, and the amount was expected. The town is preparing for the annual budget submission, and kickoff letter was distributed on Friday the 19th. Revenues, revenues are 52.3% of budget. On a straight-line basis, we would expect it to be at 35%. Tax collections are 56.5% of budget, overall with current taxes at 57.2%. Both interest income and stiff interest are running at 28.3% and 23.6%, respectively. Most departments are averaging the straight-line calculation. Expenditures on a cash basis, we are at 39% of budget. Majority of the salary line conforms to the straight-line pattern as expected. I see no issues with expenditures at this point in time. In a summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at $54,953,713,03. Expenditures are $33,967,3510, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $21,856,977,93.
Tom, good?
That was Greg's.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Update?
Oh, don't say it.
Now, we still have.
Don't want you to go.
Are we still number 10?
No, it's number 10. Real, real quick.
Okay, yes, I, I see it. I just wouldn't wanna get there. Okay, item number 10, economic development update by Mayor Bass.
Just very, very brief. Continues to see strong growth in our demand, both on residential and in commercial. So last week, our billing department had 45 new applications, they did 71 inspections, and they issued 66 permits. Some of the new things that are happening in town, just quickly, Cumberland Farms, if you see next Cumberland Farms, are doing their new car wash that will be there. Also, Sunoco, that is on Route 7 by the Abbey, is doing their upgrade on their car wash. Uh, yeah.
Taking forever.
Obvious, also, the Bagel Barn will be opening, I believe, tomorrow. Uh, which is by Savings Bank of Danbury, where the quilting place was. Diane Clafe and her husband are opening that up. Soho Pizza will be opening, they went for their CO, which is where the old economy printing used to be. So that will be opening up. Also, we all know about Popeyes, Mama's Tacos just opened across the street here.
I heard good news.
Looked good.
Ray reviews, yep.
They ran out of food?
Yeah.
Twice.
Across the street.
Uh, you also have Al Dente Restaurant, which is where the, right over here, where the former Tibbous was. So that's redone.
When are they open, Al Dente?
They're already open. Al Dente's, they've already opened, yeah. And then we also have, when you're going on Still River Drive, which, for those who don't know where that is, kind of landmark, you have the 7-Eleven, and you have the Sonic that's there. Right there is going to be the Garrity Pump Company is opening, they're gonna put their headquarters there. You have the Well, Well Built, I think is the name of it, they're doing bed liners.
Right.
They're moving from Brookfield to New Milford. Also, a tile company is moving in right by Tree Saver, Save a Tree, right there, they've broken the ground there. You go onto Still River, Mr. Brusie's company is moving into Pickett District there, as well as F.
FSN.
FSN, yep.
Part of Lasky.
Yep, Mr. Lasky, he's putting in his headquarters in Pickett District there as well. So just some of the new businesses that are beginning to break ground and open in New Milford. We've got.
On Route 7, oh gosh.
By the Dunkin' Donuts?
By Dunkin' Donuts, yes.
The Popeyes.
That's the Popeyes.
That's where the Popeyes is gonna be. Yep.
And you might want us to mention this for arts sake. The Historical Society.
Go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, the Historical Society was nice enough to put this out here for us, but on December 12th, at 2 o'clock, at the Historical Society, the Richard Booth Hall, they're gonna have a, it's gonna be a permanent exhibit called The Black Experience in New Milford, and they have put a really amazing photograph on the front of Daniel Freeman and his son Donald in 1940, sitting on a truck. They lived, this family lived in New Milford for many years. And I think it's a wonderful, we're gonna have it as a permanent, it's a ribbon-cutting for it, permanent. Yep, and excellent penmanship, the person who wrote these, yes.
Okay. So, Wolfers?
One last time, Mr. Mayor.
That's right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
We have, we have cake, wait, mayor.
You got cake, Walter?
We have cake.
Walter, we have cake over there.
Ah! Cake!